In California, we found that there's so much, whatever it is, unlocked those resources. So they might get started in the recovery process and any other situation that would be not be O R L, we know that you sit high and before you go where you're at. And part of that would pretty much have got you as blessed as we know if you've done decent in order and you could always worry about efforts in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I just want to say, welcome to our newest school board members.
Thank you.
We are absolutely blessed to have y'all here. All right, number two, adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Chair.
Uh huh.
For ten two, ten three for clarity groups.
Ten two, I'm sorry, can you read that?
Ten two, ten three.
Ten two and two is ten three, do they need to go?
No, 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 they take a session, just general question.
Okay.
And also, Mrs. Bridges was denied the agenda, did you deny it or did she contend?
We reached out for some clarification on what, because I need to know if it's something I can answer, maybe here in the office, or if it's something y'all need to answer. Missed some miscommunication, but if it needs to go, y'all, we can put it on for next month, no problem.
Ms. Bridges, is it urgent?
Nah, not urgent, but if something needed to be asked. But we gotta get with soup.
Sorry?
I'm gonna get with soup, tell them that I'll be back.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir, so we made it to what, eleven A? So, no, ten? No, so it was ten B?
Yes.
I moved those. Ten B.
Mr. Bridges, do you, your, I mean, do you want it to be ten B one and ten B two? You've got separate questions on each one of them?
Yeah, so we can, they probably gonna roll into each other every time.
All right, so we'll have ten B one and then ten B two. All right, so I need a motion on the agenda to change.
Make a motion on the revised agenda.
Revised agenda, move by Dr. Bridges, taken by Mr. Payton, let's vote. Five oh, all right, number three, approval of minutes. Moved by Mr. Payton, taken by Dr. Bridges, let's vote on that one. Five oh, all right, uh, number four, the school attendance report, I just signed it, um, well, I'll move, taken by Mr. Payton, but it's already, I filled it out, there was no more being a board member that missed more than twenty percent, that was all that was. We have to do that annually and we didn't have any, so. Yeah, okay, well, let's vote on it.
Move.
Uh, I think we had a motion, yes, sir, five oh on that one too. All right, number five, nomination of school board officer. Do it, okay, so I'm gonna open the floor for nominations for board president.
I nominate Ashton Watts.
I nominate myself.
Okay, any other nominations? Ma'am? And, okay, so now we have a motion for me, Ashton Watts, Dr. Bridges, and Murphy Payton. So, we'll start with me, I guess, as the current president.
Are you second?
They'll usually wait a second. I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Fairborn second? The motion?
Oh, somebody, Mr. Payton nominated Ashton Watts. Uh, Ms. Fairborn, second, the motion for Ashton Watts, so now we're gonna call it to a vote.
Okay, gotcha. We don't have to do each one, like, we do each one individually?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
I mean, that's well.
Just checking, okay, so, uh, votes for Ashton Watts for president. Four, four oh. Do we have to do the rest? All right, all right, now we open the floor for nominations for vice president. I, I move, uh, Murphy Payton. Second by Ms. McDuffie. Let's vote on Mr. Payton to be the president.
Explain more nominations for vice president.
Oh, I'm so sorry, any more nominations for vice president? All right, let us vote for Murphy President, Murphy Payton for vice president. Four oh.
Four one.
Four one, I'm so sorry, four one. And then we have, uh, open the floor for nominations for secretary.
Um. I nominate Dr. Bridges.
Okay, I nominate Ms. Fairborn. We need a second nomination.
Oh, second.
Second, Murphy Payton second for nomination, let us vote for Ms. Fairborn for being secretary. Five oh, all right, that was our fifth one. Number six, financials. Moved by Mr. Payton.
Second.
Taken by Dr. Bridges, let's vote. Five oh, number seven, the data and benchmark report by Ms. Tiffany Maston.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you. You're welcome. Hey, we have two staple packets before you, the one on top is our benchmark proficiency comparison report, and that's where we'll start. I report the district's proficiency achieved for each grade level listed under term two. Um, the green, you'll see some red highlights above term two, and that indicates an increase or decrease from benchmark one to benchmark two. Uh, I report that, uh, the district's proficiency achieved, um, this was the very first benchmark for our kindergarten, so remember that, this is not benchmark two for them, this is their very first test. So with kindergarten, we achieved thirty-four percent proficiency in the L.A. For first grade, we achieved thirty-nine percent, second thirty-three, third forty-five, fourth forty-five, fifth thirty-eight, sixth grade thirty-two, seventh thirty, eighth grade thirty-seven. When comparing this year's second benchmark to last year's second benchmark, our district has seen an increase in the L.A. proficiency for all grades except fifth and eighth. Okay, turn to the next page, I report our math and science proficiency. Kindergarten eighteen, first twenty-four, second twenty-seven, third thirty-nine, fourth seventh, fourth grade seventeen percent, fifth grade is twenty-seven, sixth forty-two, seventh is forty-two, eighth grade is fifty percent. In comparison to last year's second benchmark, the district experienced increases in math proficiency solely in first, second, and sixth grade. Okay, fifth grade, science fifty-one percent, eighth grade, science fifty-seven percent. When comparing to last year's second benchmark, the district has increased in eighth grade science, but decreased in fifth grade science. Okay, the next page. English one, seven percent, English two, forty percent, foundations of algebra, four percent, algebra thirty-one percent, foundations of biology, eight percent, biology one, thirty-two percent, U.S. history, forty-five percent. In comparison to last year's second benchmark, English two and algebra one have decreased, biology and U.S. history have increased. Now, the next staple packet is our middle-of-the-year kindergarten readiness assessment comparison data. I report the yellow highlighted row, which is the district results. The district total number tested is one twenty-seven, the number of students that met the goal is twenty-six, and the goal is level four and five. The difference between the beginning of the year and the middle of the year, K R A, is a negative seven for the district. On the number of, the number of students that were on grade level is fifty-seven, the percent of students that were on grade level is forty-five, the difference between the beginning of the year and the middle of the year is a negative seven. Now, for the math results, district total, students tested is one twenty-five, the number that met the goal is thirty-nine, the percent that met the goal is thirty-one, the difference between the beginning of the year and the middle of the year is zero, exactly the same, stay the same, the number that are on grade level is seventy-three, the percent that are on grade level is fifty-eight, the difference between the beginning and the middle of the year is, we've increased by four percent. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, number eight, superintendent comment.
Good evening, everybody. Starting with our general data enrollment, it is currently sixteen seventy-two for the district, that's down by three from last month. Uh, average daily attendance eighty-three point eight compared to ninety-two point four, and we know that, uh, flu and strep seasons all around, uh, that's bound to have a good bit to do with that decline. Same with teacher attendance, eighty-nine point one compared to ninety-nine point zero seven in December, same thing, flu and strep, big indicator there. Uh, student discipline, March County High School, twenty-one, Monticello Elementary, one, what did I say, one, twenty-one, March County High School, I hope I said it right or not, New Hebron one, Rod Page nine, and Topeka eleven, disciplinary incidents, okay. In other news, I wanna, uh, echo Ms. Watts said, and welcome our new board members, uh, District Three, Ms. Tammy Fairborn, and District Four, Ms. Virginia McDuffie, uh, they are not strangers to the district, so welcome to your new capacity of service to the district. Uh, we look forward to working with you. Uh, now, next month is school board appreciation month, and we were gonna wait to give these to y'all then, but with the incoming weather, we're gonna go ahead and show our appreciation early and help you stay warm, but we've got these Lawrence County jackets for you, uh, and you may need them, so hold on to them.
Thank you so much.
And staying on topic of the weather, uh, and we'll do some other things for you in February, this is just early, thank you. Staying on topic of the weather, uh, I've spoken to all the principals about the possibility of switching to virtual learning next week in the event we have to close, that way we can minimize our learning loss, uh, to the greatest extent possible. We're gonna be watching, we're not gonna say anything yet, because we know how it goes, it may change between now and then, but we're looking at Tuesday, we'll be watching the weather, uh, all day Monday to see if it makes any changes, if it don't, we'll try to make a call, um, three or four in the afternoon, we'll get that message out to everybody soon as we can. Our next regular board meeting is February seventeenth, we're gonna review policy G on personnel, if you have any suggestions for changes or additions, please let Ms. Shelley know by noon, Monday, February the tenth. And we're also gonna recognize our teachers and parents of the year at the February meeting. So, any questions?
All right, all right, you're on.
Yes, sir.
You give us an attendance report every month, who has oversight on the superintendent's attendance?
Um, well, I guess, hopefully the board would, but I can, I can give you a report on my attendance anytime.
So how do we know when you're not here? How do we know if you got sick day, you took a sick day?
Um, well, I mean, on a daily basis, I mean, I could let you know if I'm out sick.
The only reason I ask, because within ten years, it's just dawned on me that we've been hiring superintendents for the last four.
Right.
And, uh, who has oversight on, on Derek, and it started about yesterday, so I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, it would be the board, we could do it any way you want to, um, I mean, I, this is a new role for me, when I was a principal before, I'd turn in my leave to the superintendent.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, if I, if I'm gonna be sick, I'm gonna make sure Ms. Byrne docs my day, uh, because I need that documentation, I don't need, you know, superintendent never going to work and is not docking his sick days. Ms. Shelley would be the one to take care of my leave, though, so far, though, I haven't been out sick, I have been on professional leave.
No, 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 that's, I'm, I'm, that's not what I'm asking, I'm just asking.
Well, why don't, um, y'all think on it, and let me know if there's a certain way you want me to let you know, and, uh, have y'all decide, I mean, it's a legit, it's honest, anywhere, I don't mind it.
Well, I, I was trying to remember, you know, I'm a little rusty.
Yeah, honestly.
But, uh, I was trying to remember, I, I do believe that, uh, when I was superintendent, the principals and other administrators would turn in a calendar, a monthly calendar to me, and I believe I turned in a monthly calendar to you all, so, might have been, might have been on and off, but that would just be the events that, that we knew about, if, if we were gonna be out of district or what have you, so.
Yeah, and there have been a few times when, when I know I've got something upcoming, I'll let the administrators know, that Coach Hopper may be the next point of contact if they need something, or they can always text me, and when something emergency, he'd be the next one to, to contact, just so that, but that, that, you're asking how y'all be informed?
Yeah, how will we be informed?
Can I think on it?
Absolutely, I mean, it's a new question, I mean, I've never, never heard Abby's firm was elected, so we didn't have anything to do with, with her process.
That's actually crossed my mind before, like, there needs to be some kind of method of letting you know.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, I'll think on it and get back to y'all. And that's all I've got, any other questions? All right.
All right, so number ten, we'll go, it's gonna be ten one and ten four.
Move nine?
Oh, I skipped nine, I'm so sorry, guys.
No, I think she's doing it right, because all of that is consent agenda.
Oh, you wanna do dollars one?
It's just two sections of consent agenda.
Do you wanna do it at one?
It's two, it's two numbers.
Yeah, we haven't noted it's two, that was my bad, I skipped to nine, that was my problem, I'm sorry, uh, nine one through nine five.
Ms., Ms. Chair, I didn't notice the, uh, N T S I report, did we get that report?
It was, it's in the email. If you wanna take a second to look at it.
No, no, I, I, I thought it was perfect.
Used to be, it used to be, it, it always was before, but since the last, well, I guess, couple of times, because I had the same thing last week.
I, I move on that.
All right, uh, so, Dr. Bridges moves?
I'll second.
Ms. Fairborn second, so let's vote on nine one through nine five. Five oh, all right, and then, we're gonna do ten one and ten four.
I'll move?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Bridges, taken by Mr. Payton, and let's vote on ten one and ten four, five oh. All right, now, ten one B, I will move.
Just second, second.
Second by Mr. Payton, all right.
I just wanted to get more clarity, I spoke with the superintendent briefly on, on ten two, um, could you explain what's going on there?
Yes.
What has to happen for this, some of those?
And I was a little off when I explained it to you, but I talked to Ms. Bridges this morning, and I'm sure she explained it perfectly the first time, that's just the way I understood it. Um, there, there is currently two teaching vacancies, vacancies at the high school, correct?
Yes, correct.
One Spanish, and then there's an American, or whatever history it is. Okay, so, we would like to get Coach Merchant in to fill this coaching and teaching position as soon as he's released from Lamar County, where he is currently. Uh, in order to do that, we need to, we need to assign him to a teaching, uh, responsibility. Uh, and that was gonna be Spanish, because we do need a certified employee in that class, we've had a long-term sub in there that's not certified up until now, uh, that would help us meet the, the no child left behind requirements to have a certified person in there long-term, and then he could just go ahead and resume the coaching responsibilities. For the class, the other vacancy, the history, the recommendation was to hire a part-time former, uh, certified employee, he's still certified, but he would be part-time, and that way both vacancies could be filled, and we could, uh, uh, meet our objectives on, on getting that coaching position filled also. And this is just for the remainder of this year, it's not gonna be for the upcoming year, where we'll make a new recommendation, uh, hopefully have everybody fully certified in both those positions.
So, this approved, and he has to get released?
He'll have to get released, so it's pending release, and I made, we've met with him today, made that clear to him, that, you know, of course, it can't be under two contracts, so, um, he feels like he's gonna be able to get released, so, this is, uh, pending your approval, pending their release.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll, we'll do it separate, it's gonna be ten B one and then ten B two, so first is just ten B one about, uh, Mr. Merchant.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, all right, so we've already moved in second on that one, so we'll just vote on it, so, on ten B one, employment of Mr. Merchant. Five oh. All right, and the next is gonna be ten B two, the employment of Craig Davis.
I'll move.
Moved by Dr. Bridges, taken by Ms. Fairborn, and then let's vote on that one.
So you missed it when I threw?
Um, uh.
Mr. Davis.
Should be part-time.
Okay, but you, okay, so what you told me?
What I told you yesterday was off.
Okay.
Uh, yes. That's correct.
Yeah, he can be the history, he used to be the history teacher here forever, too.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was a little, until I met with Ms. Bridges this morning, I didn't understand there were two vacancies. But she explained it to me, and she probably, that was probably her second time to explain it to me, but the first time I understood it completely, to be honest with you. But yes.
All right, so did we move in second on that one, Shelley?
You did.
Okay, so we just need to vote now on Craig Davis's employment for the rest of the year. So five oh on that one, too. All right, number eleven.
Moving on to polls.
Moved by Dr. Bridges, taken by Mr. Payton. Thank you. Y'all, we care, so thank you.